Big priorities that we want to focus on this first year. I think the most important job of a council member is to provide excellent constituent services. I think so much of the reason people have lost faith in government generally is because they see government as being far away and non-responsive. And so even though the 5th Council District geographically is kind of far away from downtown LA, it shouldn't feel far away, right? People should feel like City Hall is accessible. So we're really going to be prioritizing that. The second big thing is priorities around homelessness. We need to slow the rate at which people are falling in because right now more people are becoming unhoused every day than we're getting off the streets and connected to housing and services. And so focusing upstream on homelessness prevention through strengthening tenant protections, building more affordable and workforce housing, keeping people housed. The flip side of that is the people who are already on the street. We've just finished hiring a street engagement team who will be out on the streets every single day, working with our service providers and our communities to connect our unhoused neighbors to housing and services. Council District 5 doesn't have a lot in the way of interim housing. So my team is going to be focused on finding new sites that we can develop for permanent supportive housing, master leasing existing buildings because we need a place for folks to go. We need to connect them to housing. Tenant protections are incredibly important. The best way to prevent homelessness is to keep people housed. And the best way to do that is by making it harder to evict people. And so with the end of the COVID era protections and the eviction moratorium, we have a real opportunity and obligation to enact some strong tenant protections to keep people housed. Otherwise, we're going to have a flood of evictions over the next few months, exacerbating our homeless crisis even worse. Those are the biggest things, immediate things. We're going to do a lot of good work around climate and sustainability and really making healthy, livable communities. That's reflective of the committees I'm on as well. And so thinking about how we can use smarter land use planning, smarter transportation policy and planning to create vibrant, diverse, equitable, walkable, green, healthy neighborhoods across Council District 5. The Santa Monica Mountains are a gem of Los Angeles, and we're fortunate to have a big chunk of the Santa Monica Mountains in District 5. One of my first jobs actually in law school, I worked at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. So for me, preserving our open space of what remains of it is really important and being strategic about how we make sure there's connectivity. With the death of P-22, I think it really brought home for a lot of people that we need to be doing a better job of preserving what we have. And so there's a wildlife ordinance that's making its way through. We're going to be voting on that at the council in the next couple of weeks. I'm really excited about that. It provides a good balance between what works for the neighbors up in the hillsides and making sure wildlife has a place to move around. Building more parks, more open space, shade trees is not only good for people, but it's also good for birds and wildlife. DWP is an amazing opportunity for us to expand the programs available to folks. As a member of a bunch of different committees that touch DWP, most specifically the Environment and Energy Committee, of which I'm going to be chairing, there's a real opportunity to accelerate the transition to 100% renewable power, to make the electrical grid more resilient so that when it gets really hot or really cold and people's usage spikes, the power doesn't go out. Right now, if there's forest fires somewhere in another part of the state, often our power goes out because of that. Hospitals have backups, but people are on breathing machines at home and all sorts of other reasons why people need access to electricity. The cool thing about making the grid more resilient, hardening the grid as it were, is that it's going to create thousands and thousands of local jobs in this green energy sector, which is really exciting. LA should be at the epicenter of all that work. And we're starting to do some of that work through organizations like the LA Clean Tech Accubator, but there's so much more that we can be doing and transitioning folks into clean, green jobs. The general email is councilwoman.yaroslavski@lacity.org. And the district website is councildistrict5.lacity.gov.
Our hearts are with the victims of the Monterey Park tragedy and the AAPI community. Its resilient members wanted to come together and celebrate the start of the Year of the Rabbit with a Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown. Mayor Karen Bass, LA County Supervisor Hilda Solis, and Council Member Eunice Hernandez were in attendance to support this important tradition.
Today, we're celebrating in Chinatown the Lunar New Year, the Year of the Rabbit. And because we've gone through the pandemic, we weren't really able to have such a vital opportunity to come back. So now we're here. And in spite of all the horrible things that happened in Monterey Park and in other parts of California, we take to heart the loved ones that we lost, the people that lost their lives, and the families impacted. But we're resilient, and the Chinese community, AAPI community, is resilient. So we have to help each other and move forward. And that's what we're doing here in unity. It's always a great pleasure for me to be here in the area that I represent, Chinatown, now for the last eight years.
We're here with electors from all over the state, from the Assembly down to the City Council and the county. We're here to stand in solidarity with our AAPI communities and to celebrate some joy. I know that we've gone through a lot of pain recently in the last couple of weeks, but we're here to celebrate together, to be in solidarity, and to experience a little bit of joy here in Chinatown.
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
Gong Hei Ba Chai!
It's so important for our communities to stay on track. This is a tradition for generations, and it's important that it continue.
Here we go. All right. Happy New Year!
I'm proud to have nearly 100 Los Angeles Police Officers, many of them from Asian-American, Pacific Islander descent, that are here also showing as part of this parade their partnership, their kinship with the Chinese-American community here in Los Angeles. We look forward to having a wonderful event here today. We hope that everyone comes out and enjoys it, and I'm excited to be part of it.
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
You know, many of our shop owners in Chinatown, Monterey Park, and other parts of LA County have suffered during the pandemic. We need to really grab hold of our small businesses and help support them because for many of them, this is the biggest month when they sell their goods and food, and we need to continue to go and patronize them. So do that here in Chinatown. Do it in all the enclaves where we are celebrating Lunar New Year.
Learn about marine mating at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium. Discover the history of ice cream at the Central Library, or enjoy the suspenseful play Garbo's Cuban Lover. All this up next on Things to Do.
Get into the Valentine's Day spirit at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium with dinner and a behind-the-scenes look at how sea creatures meet, mate, and raise their young. This is a unique, family-friendly opportunity to learn about marine life and participate in fun activities and demonstrations. A special sea slug love talk will be given by Cal State LA Marine Biology Professor Patrick Krug. You'll then dive into the love lives of some of the aquarium's favorite animals with Cabrillo Marine Aquarium staff members. This exclusive after-hours event is open to the public, with aquarium members getting a discounted rate of $10. Birds and Bees Under the Seas takes place Friday, February 10, at 5:30 p.m. To register or learn more, visit cabriomarineacquarium.org. The LA Public Library wants you to experience the ancient, delicious history of our most refreshing dessert, ice cream. Aristocrats and emperors enjoyed desserts made of snow, but how were they made and transported in an era before electric refrigeration? What are the differences between the many forms of frozen desserts? Have our palates changed through the years? Ice cream historian and author Valerie Campbell answers all those questions in this fun family event. Author of the story and recipes of Valerie's Cat Ice Cream, Campbell is a professional film and TV customer with a passion for history and frozen treats. Join her live and in person on Saturday, February 11, at 10:30 a.m. at the Mark Tabor Auditorium in the Central Library. For more info, check out lapl.org/events. LA's Department of Cultural Affairs invites you to Casa 0101 Theater for Garbo's Cuban Lover. This suspenseful dramedy explores the glamorous and secretive lives of Hollywood's golden age: Greta Garbo, Marlene Dietrich, and their love affair with the enigmatic Mercedes de Acosta. Greta Garbo's letters to the woman who claimed to be her love were placed under seal. That is, until Mercedes de Acosta gifted them to the Rosenbach Museum in 1960 on the condition that they would not be opened until 10 years after the death of the actress. Garbo's Cuban Lover, a play by Odelis Nanin, runs through Friday, February 25, at Casa 0101 Theater. For more information about the event, log on to casao101.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bolbal, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Bloomfield, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski. Eleven members present in aquarium, Mr. President.
Very good. And can we please ask Councilmember Hernandez to acknowledge that she's in the meeting as well?
Hello, President.
There she is. And you can hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Madam Clerk, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes of February 1, 2023.
Councilmember Park moves. Councilmember Soto Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember McCosker moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds, next.
Mr. President, would you like me to go through the agenda?
Please.
Thank you. Item one is an item notice for public hearing. Items two through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. A Neighborhood and Community Enrichment Committee report has been posted and circulated for item two, and a Planning and Land Use Management Committee report has been posted and circulated for item six. Items nine through 11 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Thank you very much. Members, are there any items that you'd like to call special? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Hi, I'd like to hold item six for a separate vote, please. Six for a separate vote?
Number six. Okay. Any others, members? I'd like to call item seven special, please, as I will have a conflict on that matter. Any others, members? Any other specials? Going once, going twice? Okay. Madam Clerk, what is now before us to vote on?
The council may now vote on items two through five and eight.
Okay, those matters are now before us. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. And Councilmember Hernandez, if you could announce your vote, please?
Yes.
All right. And close the roll. Very good. That'll take us next to public comment. So, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the instructions for comment for those who are calling, and if we could hear from the city attorney as well about our rules of public comment.
Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Thank you.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items before beginning general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately clearly on topic. If you don't, or you get off-topic, unfortunately, you'll forfeit your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are items one and nine through eleven. That's one and nine through eleven. You can speak on the other items in general if you wish. For members of the public calling in, as you were told, when it's your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't do so, council staff will prompt you once more, usually by reading off the last four digits of your phone number. At that point, you need to press star six right away, or unfortunately, we'll pass over you, and you'll forfeit your speaking time. Two points. There is a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast. So first, when it's your turn to speak, turn down the volume on the other devices right away and just listen on the phone. If you don't, it really causes a great deal of confusion. Secondly, because of the time delay, please keep one ear to the phone. Don't just be listening on the other devices, because we want you to hear in real time when it's your turn to press star six. If you're only listening on the other devices, you may not hear soon enough. Press star six soon enough, and unfortunately, then you may get passed over. So with that, Mr. President, we are ready to begin public comment.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to call the first three names of those who are here in council chambers to speak. We'll start with Ian Jamison, followed by Jennifer Kennedy, followed by Richard Serano.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
General public comment, please.
Very good. So you have a minute? The floor is yours.
Thank you. In response to Mayor Karen Bass's updated memo on February 1st eliminating testing for LA City employees and granting all exemptions, that is not good enough. The mandate still stands, and we know that the mandate will be used to mandate further vaccines in violation of fundamental notions of bodily autonomy and the principles of Roe v. Wade. So left, right, centrists, libertarians, we are all united, and we are taking back our civil liberties, and those are the 50,000 people who are employed by the City of Los Angeles, and the fucking mandate.
Jennifer Kennedy, followed by Richard Serano. And if I call your name, you can just come on up and be ready to speak, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Good morning, general public comment.
Excellent. You have a minute, please go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. This body needs to take down the vaccine mandate immediately for several different reasons. First of all, the underlying language in the ordinance requiring all city employees to submit to COVID vaccination, every single ground in that ordinance has now evaporated or been debunked, and the first of which, and most important, is the worldwide concession that the C-19 shots do not prevent infection with or transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Therefore, one shot, one person's shot does not protect another. One's person's shot does not prevent transmission, and we've seen this over and over and over in the fully vaccinated populations that continue to contract COVID. Every single ground on which the ordinance is based is done, and we need to sunset this policy immediately and put our workers back to work and keep Los Angeles moving. And we're talking about our veteran police officers, our veteran firefighters, our dedicated city employees, and every single person terminated should be reinstated with back pay. It only makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Serano, followed by Loverna Durst, followed by Leticia Luna.
Hi, Mr. Serano. Which items had you signed up for?
General public comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
Good morning, City Ballet, President Krikorian, City Council. I've been coming in because I am running for District 6 Representative, CD 6, but in doing so, I still lack some attention to where we're at. What you have for CD 12, the parking situation, 22-foot, 84 inches high, those vehicles should be extracted also from CD 6 or any of that area that everyone's camping out at. So if you please put attention to that, District is not being represented. That's what I ask on. Also, water and power employees also would like to get back to work now that this vaccination thing is kind of a 5,000 people still pending a clarification whether they're exempt or not. So please get everyone back to work if you can, and please don't mistake my pride for, again, anything else short of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serano.
Our next speaker is Loverna Durst, followed by Leticia Luna, followed by Consuelo Aguilar.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Item seven and a general comment also.
Okay, so item seven's not actually open for comment now, but you can talk about it in general. So we'll set the clock for a minute, and I suggest you pull the microphone down a bit so that we can hear you better. Excellent. So please begin.
Okay, good morning. I'm here to talk about tenants. There are so many tenants that have been standing in eviction notice and getting an eviction notice. They need to have time to, some of them are living to paycheck to paycheck, and they need time before they are evicted out of their homes. I have been in contact with mothers that have children that are now on the street because they cannot afford the rent because of COVID debt. They are struggling. I have came in contact with mothers that have children that are asking for money to help them get a motel, not a hotel, and I don't know if any of you know about motels, but they are not adequate for children. So I'm asking for protection for those mothers, for those homeless peoples that need to, the ones that are in their home. Let them stay. Give them time to raise money or get funds where they can move. I think a month would be sufficient, and landlords should be ordered not to put them out of their homes. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Leticia Luna, followed by Consuelo Aguilar, followed by Brooke Irvin.
Good morning. My name is Leticia Luna.
Good morning.
Which items did you want to speak on?
Commentary general.
General comment.
Okay.
Hola, mi nombre es Leticia Luna.
Hi, my name is Leticia Luna.
Soy inquilina y vivo en el distrito ocho.
I'm a tenant and I live in District Eight.
Como inquilina quiero urgeles a que voten sí en protección permanente para inquilinos.
As a tenant, I urge you to vote yes on the permanent resolution for the tenants.
Nadie debe ser desalogado.
No one should be evicted.
Nunca sin un motivo.
Never without a reason.
Si alguien es desplazado como resultado de aumento.
If anybody is displaced as a result of a race.
Absurdo del alquiler.
Absurd for the rent.
Debe recibir asistencia para mudarse, encontrar un nuevo lugar.
They should receive assistance to be able to move and to find a new place.
A las personas que viven de cheque a cheque deben tener tiempo.
For those persons who live from check to check, they need to have time.
Para recuperarse cuando sus ingresos te interrumpen temporalmente.
To get back when their income is interrupted.
Estamos luchando para pagar las deudas de COVID en los plazos de la ciudad mientras nos aseguramos.
Who's striving to pay their debts for the time set up by the city.
De hacer pagos de alquiler en el futuro para mantenernos alojados.
To be able to make payments in the future to be able to have a home.
Voten sí en el artículo siete y apóyenlos, por favor, para protecciones para inquilinos que no puedan pagar el alquiler.
Vote yes in Article Seven and back us up for tenants who cannot pay the rent.
Porque no me gustaría que mis hijos les pasara esto.
Because I wouldn't like this to happen to my kids. Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Consuelo Aguilar, followed by Brooke Irvin, followed by Enrique Gaspar.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Consuelo Aguilar.
My name is Consuelo Aguilar.
Vivo en el distrito ocho.
I live in Eighth District.
Soy inquilina.
I'm a tenant.
Y como inquilina yo le pido a usted que diga sí en la protección para inquilinos.
And as a tenant, I'm asking you to say yes in the protection for tenants.
Como inquilina yo estamos pidiendo su protección muy fuerte para nosotros.
As a tenant, we ask for your protection for us.
Los que rentamos.
For us, for rent.
Ya que nosotros vivimos día a día con un cheque.
Because we live day by day with a check.
Una sola persona, cabeza de familia.
One person head of a family.
Y nosotros no queremos que nos desalojen por una causa injusta, sin motivo ni razón.
We don't want to be evicted for an unfair reason.
Somos gente de bajos ingresos.
We're people with low income.
Y no queremos terminar como los demás homeless que están en la calle.
We do not want to end up like the other homeless on the streets.
De corazón les pedimos que nos apoyen y digan sí en la proposición siete.
From our hearts, we ask for your support and say yes in Proposition 7.
Muchísimas gracias y Dios les bendiga.
Thank you very much. God bless you. Gracias. Our next speaker is Brooke Irvin, followed by Enrique Gaspar, followed by Carlos
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Good morning. Item seven.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Brooke Irvin. I'm an organizer from Community Coalition here to speak on item seven. No one should ever be evicted without reason. If someone is displaced as a result of a rent increase, they should receive assistance with moving and finding a new place. People right now that are living paycheck to paycheck should have time to get back on their feet. Vote yes on item seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Enrique Gaspar, followed by Carlos León, followed by Robert Collins, followed by Joey Juárez. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Enrique Gaspar. I work at District, City District Eight with Community Coalition, where most of our members are low-income, black and brown people. I strongly urge you to vote in support of permanent tenant protections. The most vulnerable members of our city, seniors, indocmented people, single mothers, are one emergency away from not being able to make rent. Not being able to work for a few days can really set someone back months of bills. A one-month threshold for non-payment is crucial safeguard against homelessness. Please help us voting in support of permanent tenant protection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carlos León, followed by Robert Collins, followed by Joey Juárez, followed by Andrew Grabner.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Hi, I'm here to speak on general comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carlos León, organizer with Community Coalition, working District Eight, where last week we went and did the homeless count and saw so many families on the streets. Unless you're on the ground looking at people in the face, these are people, these are human beings, these are families that could have been protected if we acknowledged that we are partly guilty for all the people that are dying every night on the streets. And a lot of that has to do and can be done today with making sure that those renters protections, item number seven passes today and gets approved. Our residents showed up in numbers last night, about 80 people, families that showed up that could not be here every morning at 10:00 a.m. because they have to work and take their kids to school. They urged us, they pleaded with us, they're frustrated, they have anxiety, they cannot sleep at night, they're living paycheck to paycheck thinking that tomorrow they could also be unhoused. South Central LA right now is having a lot of gentrification issues. There are signs of sell your house immediately. Tenants are being harassed. Homeowners are being harassed to sell their properties immediately, and they're living under a lot of anxiety. Please vote yes on item seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Robert Collins, followed by Joey Juárez, followed by Andrew Grabner, and Eric Seja. Good morning, sir.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Item seven with general comments also. Good morning, everyone. My name is Robert. I work for Community Coalition. We host and support South Los Angeles where poor working residents are living paycheck to paycheck. We urge the council to vote yes on item seven. We just need the protection to make sure that everyone is going to be safe in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Joey Juárez, followed by Andrew Grabner, Eric Seja, and Jamie Koo.
Hello, I am speaking on the general public comment. Oh, there's a time. So all the workers who are fired for not adhering to COVID mandates need to be rehired with back pay and never be coerced into a medical procedure again. Yeah, all the mandates, like for work and, like, all the COVID mandates everywhere need to end also. I represent the LGBTQ community, I'm a representative of the LGBTQ plus community, I'm a representative of the disabled community, and, oh, yeah, and I'm Latino, and these, this COVID regime era of the past two, three years does not represent me, and the mandates now.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Grabner, followed by Eric Seja, followed by Jamie Koo, and Saleen Andrade.
Hi, Mr. Grabner. Which items had you signed up for?
No one likes you, Kevin. One minute of general comment.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, so, managed to get these rules today. I know you love your council rules, Paul, so I'm going to mention Council Rule Three. I'd like two people to move this motion to remove Paul Krikorian as council president, because he's, because Paul Krikorian is not a unifier, he's not bringing people together, he's just enabling KDL over there. So let's get someone who's actually going to unify people and not just, you know, try to kick people out and hate everyone. Yeah, I'd also like to ask that you, you can, you can actually move to block the reappointment of Michael Moore as LAPD chief. You can force it into a hearing where you can potentially pick someone else. While abolition's going to be the only step forward, you need to, you know, at least get Michael Moore out.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Seja, followed by Jamie Koo, followed by Saleen Andrade, followed by Jill Sue.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Hi, general comment.
Great, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Eric Seja, and I'm a resident of CD Eight. I would like to urge the council to approve the Bethune Hotel project on Vermont. I can't help but feel that the current district lines seem to purposefully keep valuable assets outside of our district, and this project is a chance to right that wrong by adding a new economic asset to the community. Not only will the project dedicate building space to be open to the public, but it allows visitors to come and experience the true beauty of South LA and spend their money on local businesses who need the support the most. Affordable housing is extremely important for the entirety of the city, but it's not the only method of community development that we need for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Koo, followed by Saleen Andrade, Jill Sue, and Angel Gonzalez. Good morning.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Item six.
Oh, could you pull the mic a little closer for you so we can hear you? Thanks.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. I'm here to speak my biggest and strongest support for this hotel project. There have been studies show, shown that neighborhoods heavily concentrated with affordable housing do have more economic hardship. We all know this is true. So I live and work near this We all know this is true. So I live and work near this site to personally know that there is already a very high concentration of affordable housing in this area. In fact, there is a low-income apartment complex right next door to this very site. And I'm not saying affordable housings are not important. I'm not saying that we shouldn't build more affordable housings. I'm just saying that we should definitely build more affordable housings, but in other areas. Turning this public land into yet another affordable housing means that we are just bringing more economic hardship to an already suffering neighborhood. Instead, we should be discussing how to bring more economic assets to the community, how to provide more jobs to the locals, how to increase better and safer walkability for the neighborhood, and how to bring more businesses to local store owners so that they can also survive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Our next speaker is Saleen Andrade, followed by Jill Sue, Angel Gonzalez, and Julie Chong.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
This for general public comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Saleen Andrade. I wanted to come this morning to show support for the Bethune Hotel project. As someone who lives and works in the community, I can clearly see that the hotel will benefit the community in many aspects that are overlooked by the general public. This hotel will have centers for our youth to grow and develop, increase the walkability level of the immediate area, which will reduce the crime rate, increase the foot traffic for all local businesses, and provide substantial funds for other projects for our direct community. Council members, please vote yes for this project as it will ignite the start for growth for a community in desperate need. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Sue, followed by Angel Gonzalez, followed by Julie Chong, and Charles Kim. Good morning.
Hi, which of the items had you signed up for?
Good morning. I am speaking on item number six.
Okay, we'll do that in general then. Please go ahead.
And so my name is Jill Shu, and I am in support of the hotel project. According to Nerd Wallet, an average income in L.A. County is about fifty thousand dollars a year. A cost of living for a family of four relatively is about four thousand. Rent alone for a two-bedroom apartment is about three thousand. So I have friends and family that are qualified for Section Eight and low affordable housing. But it's such a hurdle to get into any of those units. So with approving of this project, it will help bring in more jobs to the community as well as, you know, hopefully increase the revenue for the business tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Angel Gonzalez, Julie Chong, Charles Kim, and Sergio Lopez, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
General public comment.
Great, please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Angel Gonzalez. I'm here to say yes to the Bethune Hotel project. I strongly agree that the hotel project will improve the community. It will create thousands of jobs and improve the economic development in the community. I visit the Vermont area frequently and don't see any improvements in the area. The hotel project is a step forward to a better future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Chong, Charles Kim, Sergio Lopez, Carolyn Shin, please. Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning, everyone.
Which items had you signed up for?
Item six.
Great, you'll do it in general. So you have a minute. Please begin.
Okay. My name is Julie Chong. I'm here to support hotel project. I think this project will going to help the community a lot. That area specifically need a lot of economic development and increased walkability. This project will also add a lot more job to the area, which is great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Kim, Sergio Lopez, Carolyn Shin, and Ronnie Herrera, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Good morning. My name is Charles. I'm speaking in general comments.
Okay, please go ahead.
My name is Charles and I'm part of the development group. Next month will be the beginning of our fifth year working on this project. It's been so long, I just want to remind people and provide some context to how we got started. So we were selected through an open to the public RFP, which we responded to. We submitted a nearly three-hundred-page proposal, which was voted on and ascribed ninety-five out of a hundred points. Three agencies signed off on that, on the RFP, EWD, City Council, as well as the mayor's office. The process has been long and arduous and somewhat disappointing. The RFP clearly stated it had a desire for a hotel and hospitality asset. The RFP also stated that all departments, including the planning department, were to support the project. The CPIO states that the hotel is a targeted use and gives clear benefit and preference in certain aspects of development, and yet the CUP was denied. Despite the fact, from a heightened massing standpoint, everything was met to the T, even parking. So what's more disappointing, well anyways, please take this into consideration as you guys vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sergio Lopez, Carolyn Shin, Ronnie Herrera, Henry Fan, please. Good morning.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Yeah, it'll be a general comment.
Please go ahead.
Good morning, council members. I will be in support of the Bethune Hotel project. I'm in support of this project because of the economic development it will provide to the surrounding neighborhood. Currently, there are only shops available on Figueroa, and that only brings in business to that area. With the construction of this hotel, there will be new diversity of retail available to community and as well as a new hotel. An estimated one-hundred-eighty-six billion will be generated and distributed to the local community through local, state, federal taxes. Thank you, and I hope we support the project as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Shin, followed by Ronnie Herrera, followed by Henry Fan, and Moises Rosales. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Shin, and I'm here to support the hotel project, item number six. I'm a small restaurant owner that recently lost my restaurant during the pandemic. The developers approached me about reopening in their project along Vermont, a different project along the Vermont corridor. I ultimately passed because I didn't feel there was enough commerce or commercial presence on the street. They did mention this hotel development that I felt would entice myself and others to invest in open new businesses in the area, believe the hotel would benefit the community greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ronnie Herrera, Henry Fan, Moises Rosales, and Jamico Elder, please. Good morning.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
General public comment.
Great, thanks. Please begin.
So in regards to the Bethune Hotel project, I've lived in the area for about five years, and I'm in favor of the hotel. I think it'll bring great foot traffic to the local businesses. I also think that it's great that the first two floors are dedicated to the public via banquet halls and conference rooms, which is why I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Fan, Moises Rosales, Jamico Elder, and Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, please.
Hi, Mr. Fan. Which items did you want to speak on?
General comment and specifically item number six in general comment.
Please begin.
Council members, I'm Henry Fan of Orion Capital, the developers for the Bethune Hotel. I'd like to highlight the benefit packages that we're providing immediately for this community. We have worked with Council District Eight to provide a million-dollar package that will go to community-based organizations that provide affordable housing, youth advocacy for at-risk youth, workforce development, youth sports, after-school programming, and performing arts. In addition, we have created within the hotel approximately seven thousand square feet of dedicated space available and open to the community. The space includes a community center, a multipurpose room, conference room, and meeting rooms. And again, we are not in opposition of affordable housing. We strongly believe economic development is a vital component in the process of housing people in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moises Rosales, Jamico Elder, Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, and Mary McFadden, please.
Hi, Mr. Gonzalez. Which items had you signed up for?
Hello, good morning. General public comment, item six.
Sure, go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Moisés Rosales. I'm the president of the Southeast Neighborhood Council. I'm here today as a private citizen taking day off work to speak to you guys on this item. I am in full support of the Bethune Marriott Hotel coming into District Eight. As you guys know, we have the highest amount of affordable housing in District Eight. You know, I'm sick and tired of hearing all these special interest groups come in and talk about how much we need affordable housing. Yes, we do, but we need to spread that throughout other districts. It's a shame that in 2023, we do not have one single hotel, brand-name hotel in CD eight. You know, we should be able to benefit from the economic development, from the World Cup to the Olympics. And I just hope that you guys support this. There's a lot of things that a council member and I do not see eye on. This, I got a hundred percent your back. I hope you all do too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Jamico Elder, Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, Mary McFadden, and Donald Harland, please.
Hi, Mr. Elder. Which items had you signed up for?
General comment around six.
Sure, please go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank you again for what your family has done for my family, Ron Wright, your support that your father continued to give us. I always do that in public. I'd like to speak on behalf of the hotel. These developers, people have got the wrong impression about these gentlemen, that they are outside our community, that they are not for our community, that there are some fat cats that just want to get rich. They've been involved in things that we've been doing with mentoring youth, creating jobs. I serve about ten thousand kids in CD eight and in CD nine and CD fifteen. And they volunteer to teach business classes, to help people get into construction trades. They've helped with food subsidies. They've helped with donating computers. They are a part of our community. And they've risen themselves up from poverty. One of them is from the projects. One of them has come from managing a one-room hotel with his family standing in one room. These are people from our community that are role models to people in our community. So I'd like to support that, and I like that you, I would support any decision to let them go forward with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Elder.
Thank you, sir. Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, Mary McFadden, Donald Harland, and Jamico Elder, please.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
General public comment, please.
Please go ahead.
Well, I want to start by saying, please vote no on this hotel. Jobs are only as good as the wages they pay. And unless you're paying like ninety K a year to your workers, I don't think they're going to be able to afford to live in this neighborhood that this hotel is going to go on. But what I'm really here to talk about today is the racist in the room. Hi, Kevin. I saw you snacking a minute ago. I'm hungry. Can I have some? I wrote you a song, Kevin. Well, Taylor Swift helped me. It's you, Kevin, you're the problem. It's you. Resign, please, you racist fucking sleaze. You assault your stakeholders, then collect your city paycheck. It's you, Kevin, you're the problem. It's you. Hey, Kevin, I know that you can see me, and I don't know why you're not looking at me, and I don't know why you didn't show your face yesterday when there were a lot of people here wanting to talk to you. Hey, Kevin? Hey, Kevin, I'm talking to you. Hey, Kevin? Do you want to resign, please? Because you're a fucking racist, and all of you are complicit with his racism, your fucking speeches yesterday. Go fuck yourselves.
Thank you. Next speaker. There won't be any shouting out and disruption to this meeting. Okay, let's take the next speaker. I'd ask that you be respectful of people who are trying to speak at the mic. Our next speaker is Mary McFadden, Donald Harland, Raul Clados.
Hi, Ms. McFadden. Which items had you signed up for?
Just a general comment.
Great, please go ahead.
The Department of Building and Safety stole my property without providing me with administrative proceeding. They lied. And I got in contact with Maurice Johnson, said he was going to contact me, and I haven't heard from him. Maurice Johnson of District Eight? I need to talk to him. Maurice Johnson.
Ma'am, if you'd like, maybe somebody from CD eight staff.
Oh, but I'm finished. I'm finished.
Okay, if you could step to the side, ma'am, just step over to your right, and somebody from CD eight will talk to you. All right, our next speaker is Donald Harland, followed by Raul Clados, followed by Chris Erwin.
Mr. Harland, which items had you signed up for?
I'd like to speak about comment items six, eight, nine, eleven, and general public comment.
So six, nine, six, seven, eight are not open for public comment, but nine and eleven are. So why don't we give you two minutes for nine and eleven, and when you're done with that, you can talk about all the others in general that you want. So please begin.
Agenda item number nine, it's about to share the REIT properties along the rail, along the riverbed. Maybe that's a smart guy that's watching the REIT properties and returning them doesn't have the information because it's more high classified than the properties, other REIT properties along the riverbed there. There's, you're right, it should be a public property. Maybe it should be a park, but you should not turn it into buildings. Do not build on those REIT properties. Also, there's some conflict with the Department of Transportation and the REIT property, which ones which. Some of the REIT properties are trying to encroach or confuse the REIT properties. But do not build on those REIT properties. Make them in the parks, river experience, or dog park, anything. A playground, anything, but do not turn it into a building where the people that committed the crimes, turn it into REIT properties, can just take over the building. That's the opposite of what you're trying to do. Agenda item number eleven, that's no for nine, but make it into a park. That's beautiful there. Agenda number eleven, those properties they make along the river there are shit. Man, those are the stupidest buildings. Ninety-seven, ten, San Fernando Road. There's not to be a tiny home village there. No way. Check to the last property owner from nineteen seventy-five, the nineteen ninety-five, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-two. Changes in the properties there are no good. You need to go back to the nineteen seventies property owner. You might have actually caught up to Donald in nineteen seventy-five there in San Fernando. I was around there then. That's probably it. Also, no metro, no tiny home villages along the metro properties. You guys, I know it's a small odd piece of property, but nobody's supposed to be doing that. General comment?
Yes, please go ahead.
Agenda item number six, thirty-six eighty-five, South Vermont. Marriott is a fraud. If Marriott is doing anything there, there's a hundred percent chance that they are not supposed to be in there. The addresses do not match the parcel map. It looks like a made-up address. I don't know for sure who owns that property. It says nineteen eighty, it became government-owned, bought for zero dollars. But it also says it's an unverified parcel sale. Who sent the call to develop this property? Hotels aren't going to help anybody there. That's a political favor. It's a stunt where they're stealing somebody's property. You got to build something there for a political favor. That needs to be looked at. Number six. Number eight, one sixteen East Fifty-Ninth Street. That one needs to be looked at. That's no good. There's an empty lot there. The price there says nine dollars. Whenever a piece of property is labeled on the accessory report, sale for nine dollars, you know that they're not supposed to be there. That's no good.
Thank you, Mr. Harland. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Harland.
Yeah, don't let people, this hotel's no good.
Our next speaker is Raul Clados.
We got it, Mr. Harland. Thanks.
Mr. Harland, your time has expired. Please have a seat and stop disrupting the meeting. Have a seat. Raul Clados, followed by Chris Erwin, Charles Kim, and Sasha Hardin.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Number six in public comment.
So we'll just do it in public comment because six isn't open. So please, you have a minute. Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Raul Clados, and I'm here today in the capacity as the CEO of the El Salvador Corridor Association, association that represents over eighty small businesses around, along the Vermont corridor, as well as over seventy-plus vendors. This is a corridor that was recognized by the City of Los Angeles that stems from CD one through CD eight, just two intersections away from this proposed hotel. We have done the due diligence at a local grassroots level to get input from all of our constituencies, including the local nonprofits, who are all in support of this project for all the right reasons that have already been mentioned. Good-paying union jobs, as well as an economic engine that will complement. They already approved beautiful development of the Lucas Museum, the incoming Olympics, the Coliseum. But yet Vermont is needed, a new vision, and we're happy that this will be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Chris Erwin, please, Charles Kim, and Sasha Hardin.
Which items had you signed up for, Mr. Erwin?
General comment, specifically item number six, sir.
Sure, please go ahead. Floor is yours.
Absolutely. My name is Christopher Erwin. Good morning to you all. I'm here on behalf of YCS, Youth Build Charter Schools of California. We are an international organization under Youth Build USA, but more specifically, we have eighteen schools in the immediate L.A. area. Projects such as the Marriott Hotel project allows us to place students who've graduated, allows them a pathway to be journeyman into careers that they so seek.
allows them a pathway to be journeyman into careers that they so seek. Oftentimes, when projects like this are laid to rest, it hinders not only what is CD eight, but CD nine and residents who come from other communities who are only looking for a pathway to do better for themselves and their families. I am in high hope that you allow this project to push forward so that these young people have a place, or additional places, to look for employment. Thank you for your time. I hope that you'll carefully consider my comments.
Thanks, Mr. Erwin.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I have Charles Kim.
Mr. Harland.
Mr. Harland, please have a seat and be silent. Do not disrupt this meeting. I have Charles Kim and Sasha Hardin still.
Sasha Hardin?
Yes, I am.
Okay, which items did you want to sign up for?
Just general public comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. Sasha Hardin with the Inner City Law Center and the Keep LA House Coalition. I just have to say, the notion that affordable housing hurts communities is absurd. The housing affordability and homelessness have been a crisis in this city as long as I have been alive. Every district has too many homeless residents and a desperate need for more affordable housing. Study after study after study shows that providing the housing people can afford and the protections that allow them to remain housed improves outcomes for their children, improves municipal savings, and improves stability for all of our communities. So I urge you to prioritize affordable housing in every decision you make, and I urge you to vote yes on item seven for permanent tenant protections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Charles Kim? Mr. Kim? Okay, then let's go ahead and go to the phones and take our first caller, please. Hold on one second. Let me just... I'm sorry, had you signed up to speak? Okay, let me just, let's go ahead and go to the first caller, and let me check and make sure that I don't have any signups here.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, I hope everybody's listening. I think that it's ironic that nobody wants to do COVID protection, but yet they want a whole landlord hostage to COVID. I'd like to speak on item number, is it seven?
Yes, that sounds like the tenant protection-related one, so you have a minute. Please begin.
Yeah, so I think that having a threshold without carving out a section that exempts tenants or units that are subsidized is going to have a problem with being able to house future homeless people, our willingness to deal with people that don't have the right kind of record. And also, what about the RSO fees that you ask landlords to collect and then collect from tenants on a monthly basis? If they're not going to be, so what happens if they don't pay that? I mean, maybe they should just start paying LA housing directly instead of asking landlords to collect that on your behalf and then dole it out to tenants monthly since there's going to be this minimum threshold. I mean, you need to start thinking, not just blanket policies across the board, but carve out situations that actually...
Thank you. Sorry, your time's expired, so we should go on to the next speaker.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
A general comment, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin, speaker.
All right. My name is Luke Lozalde, and I'm a board member and volunteer coach at the University of Little League, which is the only official chartered Little League in all of the inner city of Los Angeles, who currently serves 125 local families. Anyways, I want to talk about the proposed project, the hotel project, and I just wanted to say that we are in full support of this project. Our conversation with many of the community, including those overseeing this project, have made our families in league feel confident that not only will this project help our area with good-paying union jobs and economic growth, along with tourism, but it's also in development alongside the Lucas Museum, which is only blocks away, and that this will create a community space for organizations like ours to have meetings on quality of life improvement in our local area. And so we ask that you all today, please approve this project. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Speaker, are you there?
My name is Imani, and I would like to give public comment.
Absolutely. You have a minute, and the floor is yours. Please begin.
I am an Africa Town Limerick Park vendor and a member of the African Village Vendors Association. Ordinance 4118 is unconstitutional and should be struck down. It criminalizes the homeless and subjects those in the poorer communities where this ordinance is being enforced to unnecessary police confrontation, which can lead to abuse and other negative interactions between the police, who are not familiar with the daily activities in these communities, and the homeless, and those who then frequent and conduct business in these areas. Ordinance 4118 punishes the homeless and those and other community members, and this should be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits 2988, press star six to unmute.
Hi, speaker, we're having a little trouble hearing you. Could you speak a little louder and directly into your microphone and let us know which items you want to speak on? Speaker, are you there? Okay, I think we lost the speaker, so we should go on to the next person. You can call back if you want. Maybe you just have a bad connection.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. I'd like to speak on general public comment, please.
Absolutely. You have a minute. Please begin.
Good morning, Mr. Pabul. I would like to say kudos to Karen Bass, and good for her for not being swayed by the BLM movement for reappointing Police Chief Michael Moore, and the fact that she supports funding the police instead of defunding the police. Now, BLM thinks that just because Karen Bass is blocked, they think that they could flip her to favor whatever they want, but that doesn't work like that. And I want to say good for Karen Bass for supporting funding the police. And I do support reforming the police instead of defunding the police. Thank you, and I wish everything goes well this year.
Thanks very much. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
All available items and general public comment, please.
Sure, so you have three minutes for items one, and then eight through, or excuse me, nine through 11. So that's one and nine through 11, then a minute for general after that. So we'll set the clock for three minutes for the items to begin with. So please begin.
Thank you, Mr. Pabul. Good morning, public. The Los Angeles City Council is a criminal organization of organized crime and nothing more. All votes, just like every day, will be yes votes. Dawson's criminal number six to put this luxury hotel that the people don't want will be a yes vote as well. Item number 10, although the people don't want it, and the planning department doesn't want it either. Number 10, I believe it is, I might get that number wrong, but it's to increase the amount that a contract needs to be before there's a contract, rather, from $5,000 to $25,000. Now, public, is this something we really want, that the corrupt sleazy council want to do? Increase contracts that have to be in writing, that are over $25,000 only? The looting, the self-serving, looting, enlightening their pockets is already at astronomical levels. They give $10 million to sleazy little Marquis Dawson for his $10 million luxury offices. What do you think they're going to do with these relatively small contracts? $10 million, people are land dying in the street. We don't need this. Krikorian says he wants to restore trust in the city council. Really? We're going to have the FBI sniffing around all over the place. They're just giving money to their cronies. No, it should be decreased to 1,000, not increased from 5,000 to $10,000. Do we really want these corrupt people giving out contracts that are not in writing, that don't have monies for the city that are not in contracts? I mean, look at what he's doing. Look at what they're doing with this balloon thing. 34,000 square feet of public land given to these developers. For what? Campaign contributions to that short, little corrupt little guy, Marquis Dawson. Campaign contributions. The city does not want that. But does that matter? The planning department turned it down. The community made it clear, they turned it down. Now they're exerting their authority, city council-wise, going around the public. Do we really need that, people? This corrupt council? Do we really need that?
And you can go on to general if you wish.
Thank you. These developers have front-loaded all their people, probably some of those guys' relatives, to call in and say they want this project. This is another giveaway, just like Heather Hud did Wednesday, of 34,000 square foot of public property. He's talking about we have so much affordable housing in CD eight, like hell. We have the highest unemployment, highest, because this little short guy tried to take the unemployment office for himself. The highest homelessness. And by the way, it was supposed to be Black History Celebration Wednesday. They carted out these coons to celebrate themselves. Herb Wesson, my gosh, this guy increased homelessness at 5,000%.
Thank you. Speaker, next speaker.
Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Item seven, please.
Sure, you have a minute. Please go ahead.
My name is Kimberly. I'm with the Keep LA House Coalition in solidarity also with Eastside Leeds. And as a renter, I want to strongly urge you to vote yes on item seven, as is to not jeopardize any more tenants. Please support permanent tenant protections for non-payment of rent. Tenants are struggling to pay back COVID debt on the city's timeline while ensuring we make rent payments going forward to keep a roof over our heads. So we ask that you move these protections, including protections for relocation assistance, forward without any further amendments to keep as many Angelinos as possible from falling into homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. I guess it's item number seven, and can I do public comment as well?
Okay, so seven isn't really open for public comment, so we'll just give you general, and you have a minute to speak about it. So please go ahead.
All right, sounds good. I'm urging each and every one of you to vote yes for this because of the fact that, right now, I am one of those people that is facing eviction because of the fact that, you know, we don't make a living wage in this city. We make a minimum wage, and the fact that you need to make at least $40 an hour to afford anything in this town is ridiculous. But we need to control that. But anyways, we need this protection, and the fact that each and every one of you are allowing racist Kevin Gillian to still sit there, he needs to go. And each and every one of you that sit there and let him sit there, shame on you. Have a great day. Thanks.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Hi, which items did you want to speak on?
Oh, hello. My name is David Bullock from Granada Hills, and I'd like to speak on item one and general public comment.
Great, you have a minute for each. Please begin.
Thank you. The employee vaccine mandate, Ordinance 187134, was wrong to begin with. You never have to have medical treatment that is new and novel in order to maintain employment. I do understand the city council's situation at the moment, when COVID was rampant, and they was turtled by the CDC that this would stop transmission. Well, since then, transmission has not stopped because of the COVID-19 vaccine. CDC Director Rochelle Walensky has admitted this on public TV. So at this point in time, I urge the city council to rescind Ordinance 187134, employee vaccine mandate to COVID-19 for all current employees, and the best and last final offer that requires future employees to get the vaccine mandate, and that those that have been terminated so far because of not compliance should be hired back and given back pay. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hello? Hello?
Hi, Sean. Which items would you like to speak on?
Item six and general public comment.
Okay, so we'll give you a minute for general public. You can talk about six then. So please go ahead.
I'm for item six. General public comment. Kevin, you need to go. I've seen you on TV, and I'm not happy about you. You need to get the hell out of here. You need to go. Stop imitating, stop coming to city hall council meetings. I hope Councilwoman Hernandez gets better. I'm sorry she has COVID. I was right. I hope you get better, Ms. Councilwoman Hernandez. I'm praying for you. Oh, boy, I hate this day. Fifty years ago, I lost my dad. He was a great lawyer in LA. He did great things for Los Angeles. My father's name is Kenneth J. Murphy, Sr. I'd like it to adjourn in memory of Kenneth J. Murphy, Sr. I'm going to pay respect, going to go down to St. Mel later on and have a little lean of mass. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Have a good weekend. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits 5179, press star six to unmute.
So caller with the digits 5179, if you're there, please press star six right away, or we'll have to pass over you. Okay, if they're not unmuting, I think we should go on to the next caller.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
It's Eric Previn. I'd speak on the available items as well as the general public comment.
Yes, so you have three minutes for items one and nine, 10 and 11. One and nine through 11. After that, you can have a minute for general. So please begin, Mr. Previn.
Okay, well, I would start by suggesting that, whereas I understand where you're going with item 10, you know, relative to making it so that you don't have to do a contract, unless it's over 25,000 instead of 5,000. Currently, if you want to make a deal or do something, and it's under 5,000, you can get away without a contract. But the city requires that you have a contract if it's over that, because those numbers can add up quickly. You'll remember Krikorian tried this stunt during the pandemic by waiving all the, you know, kind of objective opportunities for the know, kind of objective opportunities for the public to understand what's happening in order to facilitate the smooth outpouring of money into the community to rescue all of us. This is not a good area, okay? This is a classic government agency play, where they pretend that making contracts that make clear, here's an idea, I would agree, it shouldn't be cumbersome, I would agree to the idea that every agreement or funding source comes on a public meeting agenda, and not in the section where you can't speak on it. Then we could say, you know, let's cut back on silly paperwork, because the public will come out and say, what? What is that for? And the people need to know what it's for. It's just a terrible idea, and it's very shameful for Mr. Harris Dawson to be doing that. Now, going to the, um, you know, the notion of remote participation, um, we have to do it. You know, a poll recently found that so many Angelenos feel that LA is off on the wrong track, and when they were asked why, what direction they felt LA was headed, in the following year, they said downhill. So this is a terrible, terrible turn of events, and we have to let the public back in.
So I, I think you slid off the items, Mr. Previn. Could you get back on them, please?
No, I'm sliding right back on to number 11, or
Thank you.
Later items, yeah, I don't mind. Um, and, and let me just say that, uh, where is number 11?
Levin's, the tiny home, improved housing?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, I think, you know, ADUs are so important, and, you know, I'm not clear why the city is preparing so many hotel projects. Well, with, for example, let's go to the general and talk about the hotel project. I think that, you know, the people have made a kind of a point, that there aren't enough hotels in that area, and it's right down the street from Eyes Narrowing, the George Lucas Museum. Well, here's a thought. What if we bold into Mr. Fan's excellent proposal? The notion that everybody will be admitted to that museum for which we bent over backwards? Mayor Garcetti, Curran Price, Mark Ridley Thomas, Herb Wesson, his lovely wife who works at the California Science Center, which is free. Okay? These museums need to be free. We do not need billionaires coming into the area to set up hamburger stands in our neighborhoods. And we like hotels. In Studio City, we are hoping that they'll knock down the fake idea of saving the day with the Tower of Residences. Instead, they'll protect a very nice old hotel that's already there. Hotels have a purpose, but they should not be approved when the people of the region are going to be blocked from these amenities because they're unaffordable. We don't need a $25 admittance to the
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Thanks very much. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
General public comment, please.
Absolutely, you have a minute. Please begin.
Hi, my name is Wes Sigmuller. I'm a West Hollywood resident and a clinical research worker. Um, I work with people that are leaving, that are exiting human trafficking situations, and have also organized peer support groups for sex workers in LA. So suffice to say, I work with really vulnerable populations that have been absolutely decimated by vaccine discrimination. Their upward social mobility and economic stability has been completely put, thrown into question the last few years because of these vaccine mandates. I've been affected by it as someone working in the field, um, and it's been really scary. So to see that city employees have not been guaranteed to be rehired with back pay when they, when their fundamental constitutional rights were violated by this body is unacceptable. So the people are demanding that all city employees that were terminated be rehired with back pay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Next caller, please. I've asked you before, please don't shout out. Can we take the next caller, please?
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, this is Ms. Foster. I have a general comment, uh, for number six, I mean, number, number eight.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say that landlords that work with the Section 8 program provide affordable housing, and, uh, under that program, the tenants are never responsible for the entire rent. So, um, when you talk about doing thresholds and taking disadvantaged applicants, it's going to be very difficult for landlords to want to participate in programs where there are thresholds for them not to pay their rent. Um, I think that you need to do carve-outs for people that work with, um, programs. There is no homeless program that does not, that does not require landlord participation. So you need, when, when you're thinking about housing, people that have been, uh, released from prison, that don't have, uh, a work history, are people that have been homeless, that don't really have income. Uh, income goes into the formula for the Section 8 program. I've never had an agency ask me not to
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. Uh, next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
10, 9, and 11, public comments, please. Our general comment.
So I think you said, um, 10, I think you said 9, 10, 11, if I have that right, and then general, so you have three minutes for those items. And then after that, I mean, for general.
Okay, they're not so much in order, but anyway, speaking directly to the public versus this childish city council. In any case, this motion, number 10, is an ordinance change that would allow the mayor and other corrupt city councils to increase, uh, the contracting limit on city transactions that would mandate a contract from the current 5,000 to 25,000. We heard about this earlier. In other words, this already corrupt city council is going to be able to loot and give more money to their cronies and more, like Jose Huizar and Mark Ridley Thomas-type pay to play schemes to their corrupt city council buddies. This is just what the people of Los Angeles need to inspire, more confidence in the corrupt city council government. It appears that Paul Krikorian, just as corrupt and worthless as the other city council presidents, it appears that he's just, he's just another Norrie Martinez and corrupt Herb Wesson. This insane motion, going on to 9, 10, this insane motion only furthers the interests of this corrupt self-serving city council, so they can line their pockets with more campaign contributions or direct pay to the plate. The motion states that we, that will streamline the contracting process, but it will only serve to streamline this corrupt government's ability to loot and steal from us, the public. It's a small wonder, wonder to me that one of the most corrupt self-serving Uncle Tom politicians Los Angeles has ever been deceived with has his name on this motion. Corrupt Marquise Dawson, the new king-pimp of the black community.
Thank you.
This motion per-
Oh-
Okay, I got general comments.
Sorry.
Um, okay, um, my comment is related to item six. Black corrupt Marquise Thomas is lining his pockets with developer money, giving away, here we go, 34,000 square feet of public land, public land to his developer buddies to build a luxury Marriott hotel. Boycott Marriott hotels. We are being looted, public. Corrupt Marquise Dawson is trying to cram a luxury Marriott hotel on city-owned property. He is lining his pockets with campaign contributions from his developer in exchange for our property, public. This is just another example of what the black community has, again, zero representation. And again, will Marriott Hotel hire people and pay them $40 an hour so that they can afford to live in property throughout Los Angeles? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. Which items would you like to speak on?
I would like to do, uh, public comments.
Sure, you have a minute. The floor is yours. Please begin.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Wiggum, president of the African Village Vendors Association at La Merck Park, and I would like to talk today about first, uh, 4118, and we feel this unconstitutional, and we feel it's criminalization of the homeless that are in that community. And instead of criminalizing, you need to support and, and help them be housed, as opposed to trying to kick them out. They are intricate part of that community, and they really don't have anywhere else to go. As in terms of us as an organization, we are nonprofit, and we represent over 70, uh, black-owned vendors that frequent there and that are really stakeholders, because they've been there for like five, six, seven years. They are constantly, every week, uh, selling their products. They are street merchants and should be considered stakeholders, but they're not being invited to the decision-making tables of that area that the council members are there. Eric Egler had one-
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, thanks very much. We're going to take two more callers, and then we're going to close public comment. Next caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Um, item seven and general public, public comment.
Okay, so seven's not open for, as an item, but you can talk about it in general. So we'll set the clock for a minute.
Then I guess I'll, I'll do about six, the hotel.
Excuse me?
What about item six? Is that the hotel?
You can go ahead and speak about that, sir, for one minute.
Yeah, they're, they're both, the hearing's not open as, on the items for either of them, so we can do them both in generals. So we'll give you a minute. Please begin.
Uh, yeah, before I start off, uh, Krikorian, I wish you had the same energy for, and contempt for DeLeón being in that space and basically disrespecting the community and the majority of Los Angelinos who roundly reject him and his racism, as you did for the public who hold those views. It's really sad that you're more upset with the public for rightfully being upset with DeLeón than you are with DeLeón. It's really, uh, disconcerting. Uh, somebody in your district, um, yeah, just real quick, since I don't have much time, uh, past the rental, rental protections, we need more housing. We don't need more hotels. Those hotels are Trojan horses, largely lead to people being gentrified out of their communities, out of their neighborhoods. Don't fall for it. We need more permanent, uh, housing protections. We need more affordable housing. We need more housing, period. DeLeón, get the hell out of city council. You are a disgrace to the city of Los Angeles. You are a disgrace.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you. And, uh, we'll now take our final caller, please. Next caller.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Hi, which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, good morning. Uh, just public comments, please.
Sure, you have a minute. The floor is yours. Please begin.
Uh, good morning. Thank you for taking the, uh, call. I would like to speak momentarily on the revised COVID-19 city update memo, uh, with regards to the employee vaccine mandate ordinance 187134. I think it's a joke that everything with regards to the state of emergency COVID-related has been rescinded, except the employee vaccine mandate. So we're no longer in a state of emergency. COVID is going to be here forever, probably. When do the employees get to go back to work? When do they get reinstated? They need to be, uh, made whole, uh, they need to be paid, they need to be returned to work, and they need to receive an apology from council. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, that'll close public comment on all agenda items, and closes general public comment as well. Um, Madam Clerk, uh, what items are we now, uh, able to vote on?
The council may now vote on items one and nine through 11.
Those matters are now before us. If there's no-
[inaudible]
Stop disrupting this meeting and leave quietly, please. Jesus. Okay, uh, items one and nine through 11 are now before us. If there's no discussion on those items, please open the roll. And Councilmember Hernandez, if you could please register your vote.
Yes.
Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That takes us to, uh, item number six next.
And Mr. President, if I may interrupt just for one moment, the ordinance for item one will be held over for one week to Friday, February 10th for a second consideration, unless it's reconsidered with 12 members present.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, that'll take us next to item number six. And if there's no one wishing to be heard on item number six, let's go ahead and open the roll. And Councilmember Hernandez, your vote, please. All right.
That's 10 ayes, oh, sorry.
Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes and one no. This item is adopted.
Thank you. Uh, that will bring us next to item number seven, and as I am, uh, I have a conflict on this matter, because I do own rental property. Uh, Mr. Price?
Uh, Mr. President, I have a similar conflict, uh, as a housing provider, and I must recuse myself at this time.
Very good. So Mr. Price and I will both be recused, so I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Harris Dawson to come forward, please, and take the desk.
So Ms. Rahmon is, um, has entered the meeting.
All right, uh, welcome, Ms. Rahmon. We have a, a quorum, uh, and so just want to make sure nobody wants to be, there are no members that want to be heard on this item. I don't see any, uh, speakers there. If there are no speakers, we'll, uh, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
And I'm sorry, if we can ask Ms. Councilmember Hernandez for her vote, please.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. That's nine ayes and one no. The item is adopted.
Excellent.
And I, I will note that the ordinance passes but without the urgency clause, because that would require 12
12 and nothing vote. All right. Do we have any other items before us?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
All right, they are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Uh, announcements? Announcements? Adjourning motions? Adjourning motions to my right? Uh, to my left? All right, I've got a, a adjourning motion if, um, folks in the audience and members will stand. Uh, it's with a, a heavy heart. This is about the 10th or 11th time I've stood before you and done this, and asked that we adjourn in the memory of a child or children, uh, who have lost their lives to fatal hit-and-run accidents. Christopher Amaya Pineda and Damian Amaya Pineda were taken from us in a fatal hit-and-run vehicle collision, vehicle collision in the early morning of January 9th. Debbie Amaya was driving her three children to visit their grandmother when a speeding driver ran a red light and crashed into her vehicle at the intersection of Main Street and 111th in the 8th District. Debbie's 13-year-old son, Christopher, and her 18-month-old Damian, unfortunately both lost their lives in the accident. They were taken away far too soon. There are few things more heart-wrenching than watching a mother have to bury their children. Her boys were both described as funny and loving. Her oldest son, Christopher, would call her every day after school to make sure she knew that he'd made it home safely from schools. Uh, traffic fatalities like this don't happen everywhere. They don't happen to everyone. They disproportionately involve children, uh, our city, our city's unhoused population, and low-income, uh, communities of color. And so- And so our hearts and prayers go out to Debbie, Mario, Jade, and the entire Amaya Pinedo family, and we ask everybody who operates a vehicle here on our streets in the city of Los Angeles to be careful. Nothing you are doing, or no place you are going, is as important as human life. And with that, I ask we adjourn, that we adjourn in their memory. Thank you. We're adjourned.